Councilor Morrison.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilor Ormski.
Here.
Councilor Downs.
Here.
Councilor Rankin.
Here.
Next is presentation of town council recognitions. We're gonna just change that. First, we'll do the swearing in for Officer Tyler Adams.
Stand in front of the screening board. Here. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tyler Adams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
Duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of patrol officer.
Of patrol officer.
For the Town of Bucksport.
For the Town of Bucksport.
Congratulations, sir.
Tyler, where are you from?
Right from Bangor.
Right from Bangor? And who you got here with you today?
My mom, my brother, and my stepdad.
Nice, nice. Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
If you folks want to go outside, you take some pictures, we'll. Next, we've got a Spirit of America Award 2021. Mr. Rotella.
So. Good evening, and welcome all of you this evening to the presentation of the 2021 Spirit of America Award to our Community and Economic Development Director, Richard Rotella. Although Rich was not born in Bucksport, it is fair to say that Rich is the poster child example of the community spirit, community caring, and community focus for which Bucksport is so well-known. I think it is also fair to say that Rich is one of our most well-known Bucksportians. This is not because he works for the town in a very public and key position. It is because Rich has, and continues to do so, devoted countless years of his life to the youth of this community through coaching, mentoring, and most recently with internships with the town. It is because Rich always goes the extra mile to help, to volunteer, and to promote our community. He serves on the boards of many of our local organizations and has done so for many years. You rarely see Rich without some piece of attire with a Bucksport school or town logo. We have joked on many occasions that Rich Rotella indeed bleeds purple and gold. Rich is a man with a mission. His mission is the betterment of his adopted community, and the time, effort, and energy that he devotes to that mission is a benefit to each and every one of us. In looking for an appropriate award for Rich, I found this. It says "difference maker", which I thought was the most appropriate way in which I could describe Rich. He is a difference maker in Bucksport. His tireless efforts to encourage and support our most valuable resource, our children, makes a difference. His incredible work ethic, which sees him going from high-level meetings with corporations interested in coming to Bucksport to walking the waterfront to make sure that it is a clean and pristine experience for residents and businesses, makes a difference. His devotion to his family, his friends, his coworkers, and his community make a difference. Rich Rotella is our difference maker, and we are fortunate to have him. And on this, it says, "Richard Rotella, 2021 Spirit of America Award, Town of Bucksport, June 24, 2021. With thanks for your continuing dedication to making Bucksport a better place to live, work, and play."
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll speak later. Do you want to say anything now?
I'm actually gonna go volunteer, but. Thank you. It just really does mean a lot, and I appreciate all of you for all of your support. So, thank you, and I will be back on July 6th. Thank you.
Enjoy your occasion, Rich. Next is consideration of previous meetings. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion is second. Comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Orders to consider or introduce? We don't have any discussion items. No discussion items tonight. Agenda items. First is our resolve 2021-75 to accept the highest bid for the fire department rescue truck. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion of second. I think all of our public safety folks were out taking pictures. It was what, seven bids, eight bids?
Eight bids, and the highest was $8,000. The minimum bid on the vehicle when it was put out to bid was $3,500.
Could that money go back into the reserve account?
Yes.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item nine is appointments. I know you've been down the left, so you're gonna process them.
My brain is hurt.
Appointments. The first is Michael Haydock, Ward of Appeals. Michael here?
Yes.
Oh. I didn't butcher your name, did I?
No, you got it.
All right. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
You're all set. You want to do that, right?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations.
So, thank you.
Where? I saw your background. You'd done a lot of work in New York and stuff?
I spent 36 years professional career in eastern Pennsylvania and New Jersey, Delaware, as a field ecologist and supervisor with the federal government. And I retired in April. We bought the house up here in October, moved into this wonderful river town. Because it reminded us of the wonderful river town we were living in in eastern Pennsylvania, where I served on the zoning hearing board for 23 years. So, I thought I wanted to help out, be part of the community. And I had that experience. I thought that could transfer well.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And it's amazing the parallels between that community and this community, and that thriving river town with mixed economic past and with a bright future. That town had industries left, and new ones came in, and it thrived, and to our benefit. When we sold our house, it was a hot market. So, Bucksport has a bright future, and I want to be part of that.
I gotta ask, and I ask, how did you find us?
Drive up Route 1.
I spent my summer after college in Katy working for the park. I was a seasonal ranger, and I always wanted to move back. And end up, me and my wife, Carrie, we had kids. We settled into Pennsylvania. But we vacationed in Maine, and always wanted to come back. So, we were looking down coast. And we came up here, and it was just like, that was it. This reminded us of a little town, Yardley, near where General Washington crossed the river on Christmas Eve, 1776. So, we were sold.
Nice.
We forgot to salvage here.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
It's a great community.
Great, thank you.
Everybody's been super friendly. You can't drive 15 minutes and not be somewhere beautiful, natural surroundings. We're glad that it's home.
Great. Well, we'll put you to work then, too. Awesome. Just so you know, fellas, too, we approved your sale of your truck back there, so. Next is Katie Hessler for the cemetery committee. Is Katie here? All right. How would the council like to proceed?
Make the motion to approve.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations to Katie. And by all means, folks, if you don't want to stick around to listen, it's quite all right. But by the looks of this, we're not gonna be here much longer.
Item 10 is approval of deeds. First is Kelly J. Albert, Alan D. Badcock, joint tenants, map 47, lot 14, 6/20/18, and 6/19/19, tax lien discharge. And the second is for Kelly Albert, map 47, lot 013-001, 6/19/2019, tax lien discharge. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Town manager report.
Okay, as I was raving about earlier, in a good way. I am so happy to report that the Tim Emery Municipal is open and operating according to the Y. Things are going very well there, and there were more than 200 people who enjoyed the pool in the first two days of its operation. The new pump system has resulted in crystal clear water. The repair that we did has resulted in no water loss through the lines. And the newest paint job allows people to visibly see where the side slopes end on the side and the bottom of the pool begins, which has been commented on by many parents. And I just want to take a minute. In 2019, the Town of Bucksport, in a referendum, voted to authorize the community to spend up to $1 million for the construction of a new pool. And through the very hard work of a committee that took a look at this pool and what its options might be, instead, the council went down the path of renovating the existing pool and spent a total of $135,000, none of which had to be borrowed in order to make the pool whole. And if you haven't been there, go. It is a beautiful facility, and it is being well-enjoyed by many people, primarily right now, the youth of our community, which, when this whole project, when the former pool systems broke down, the primary goal was to get it up and running or get a new one for the sake of the children in the community who, for decades, had always had one, and now do again. So, I'm very excited about the pool. I drive by it several times a day just to watch all the people having a good time. And our second, another well-used facility that was in sad shape was our fishing pier. And that project should be completed by Monday. All the pilings are in, and the 10-by-40-foot tee on the end of it will be installed. So, that will be finished ahead of schedule for the contract that we had for that, which is for people who want to strike or fish. That's another location for them to go. The retaining wall downtown bid project, those bid results will be on your agenda for July 8th to move that project forward for construction in this year. I have hired Cassie Allison for the front office position at the town office to fill the vacancy created by Roxanne Clapper's retirement. Cassie is a lifelong Bucksport resident and started work on Monday, June 21st. She comes to us with great office organizational and cool under pressure skills, and she's catching on quickly and already working the front counter. The year two of our road project, the reclaimed grade pay project on the Millvale portion of it is well underway, and the binder coat should be down by this Friday. It has been some time since we have had a town dig up the road project here in Bucksport, and there was some unhappiness with the reclaimed grade part of the project. Initial flagger issues for the contractor created some issues, thus created another. But the project should result in a much better base and travel service. The Silver Lake portion is in year three along with the downtown work. I have requested bids on a bond anticipation note that would cover both year two and year three of the road project. Following the end of the year three project, the amount used on the note would be financed through the main bond bank for seven years, since that is generally the lowest borrowing rate for municipalities, and is likely that the current interest environment may change before the project is done. Bid results for the note will also be on the July 8th agenda. Roxanne Clapper is retiring from the town office, and her last day of work is Thursday, July 1st. We are having an open house in the lobby on that day from 1:00 to 5:00 for members of the public who would like to come and wish Roxanne well in her well-earned environment, I have retirement environment. The town has received a filing from the attorney for the owner of the spring fountain asking for a trial of the facts related to the dangerous building order issued by the council. This motion is based on the fact that the owner contends that there was bias against him in the process of this, the issuing of this order. Our attorney has provided the town's response to this request, and the owner now has 14 days to respond, and then the court will decide whether to grant or deny that motion. I met with our investment advisors from the first that the council chose to do some cash and equity investment in 2014-15. I am pleased to report that the undesignated funds investment, which is 75% CD cash and 25% equities, has earned 8.5% interest since January of 2020. The main purse funds that the town received from the public retirement system, which were invested at 50% bond CDs and 50% equities, has earned nearly 21% interest for the same period. That fund, which started with $434,000 in 2015, now stands at $685,000, which is a great return for a five-year period. The goal when the council took the step of investing that money was to help offset the cost of employee retirement at some time. And at this time, if the council chose to, it could use 4% or so annually, and the fund would still grow at a healthy rate, making that 4% a higher amount each year. The first would like to meet with the finance committee of the council at one of our September meetings to discuss the possibility of adding more funds to the 75%, 25% group. I can tell you that right now, current CD rates are worse than awful, and this would provide the potential for some better interest earnings. I attended a meeting of the senior resource committee on Wednesday, and one of the topics of the meeting was how to encourage more people to volunteer since the pool seems to be shrinking. It was suggested that the town council could be helpful in this effort by helping to encourage more volunteers to step up to assist the host of local organizations that we have. A few years ago, we had a volunteer fair at the high school as part of Heart and Soul with many organizations represented, and encouraged the public to come and visit and talk with these groups to see if there was any group that a person might be interested in volunteering to help with. And I'm wondering if this is something the council would be willing to sponsor and participate in again, just sort of see who's out there and what they might want to do. So, the housing study that the town received grant funding from through the Maine Forest Products Initiative, they will be doing site visits in July. A draft will be coming out in August, another one in September to be finalized by year end for the housing study for the town. And the first meeting of that group is this Friday.
This Friday is in tomorrow Friday?
As in tomorrow Friday. And then, finally, we placed tax liens last week. And we placed the lowest number of tax liens in the history that anyone recorded, by 52. It's an incredible. We've been trending up for the past five years in terms of collections. 1920 was the highest collection rate at year end ever, and the lowest number of liens. But that was by a few. And this year, that's out of the park. It, you know, to place 50 odd liens less than you ever had is significant. And whether it's people using stimulus funds or whatever, and if it is, it was a wise use because many people who have been in difficult tax situations are in better shape now than they've been in a long time. But it also speaks to the fiscal health of the community, which is we have a very high percentage of tax payments here, and it's trending upward. One of our biggest problems is going to be how to figure out how to spend $490,000 in ARPA monies because all the categories relate to lost revenues. We didn't lose revenues. Or staff cutbacks, or those kind of, and we didn't do any of that. You know, it's going to be an interesting discussion because it's very specific. And many of the things that, unfortunately, many communities experienced, this one didn't. So, that's for another meeting, but that's all the news there is. Luke is getting prices for a heat pump for this room so that we can patch together another air conditioning system.
I would want to, Susan, is it real okay with her to locate that volunteer fair again?
Yeah, that's a great idea. A lot of people might get involved.
Did they find any great amount of success from the last one? Did it help any, or they increased their volunteers?
The number of, there were a lot of people at the fair, but they were, the majority of them were people who were with organizations. And so, it provided the organizations a lot of time to interact with each other and figure out. But the idea of, the suggestion was made at this that you folks are our elected officials in this community, and that if you sort of got behind or were leaders in trying to encourage people, that people would be more likely to listen because you're already leaders. You were elected, and so if encouraging volunteerism was a priority for you folks, and you participated that way, that you might get more people in the community to say, okay. This is, the people we elected think that, you know, there's room for us in some way, shape, or form. And we talked about all sorts of volunteering, and that some people have very specific skill sets that if organizations knew that, they might do something once in a while. But for many people, having to be out all the time when two people in a family are working, and everybody's got, or has kids, and, you know, it becomes very, very difficult to do that consistently. But if volunteering isn't, doesn't mean you have to be there every minute, all the time. There's niches that could be filled by. We have some really talented people in Bucksport, and I think that, I tend to agree with the senior resource group that I was talking to, that, you know, people tend to listen to you folks in what you think's important. And I think that if you would sort of get behind this, that we could sponsor one that might initiate more participation than we perhaps had at the last.
What if you tied it in with tall ships? Where you're gonna have a lot of people down here.
Well, we talked about doing something where everybody, but it doesn't have to be inside a building. It could be outside, and everybody has a.
Could be in the parking lot. You're gonna have a lot of people down here, I think, with tall ships.
We can shoot for that.
Pretty great turnaround, but.
I was gonna say, that's weeks away instead of.
Take a look at it, see what you can come up with, and maybe we can talk about it, just a concept of the next one.
At the eighth, yeah.
Just a thought. I mean, you could do it anytime in the summer. I think outdoor would be better.
Well, it would.
One of the things we talked about doing, too, was, you know, and we talked, and talked, and talked, and talked, and talked, and talked. Like a community barbecue up to the schools, you know, where we're sitting there, you know, helping with serving the hot dogs and hamburgers and trying to, you know, put names to faces. I mean, everybody knows there's a council there. At times, I don't know if they know exactly who's who. And if you get something like that, and folks love to come out and have a hamburger, you know, and if they think they can go out and see their neighbors and see what's out there, maybe incorporate something like that into a volunteer fair or something like that.
That'd be fun. I like hamburgers.
I do, too. As you can tell.
Well, I'll put together some ideas, and on the eighth, we can talk about it.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Anything else off Susan's report?
I'd like to ask, are we, now that we've got these projects in place, we've done the pool, are we looking at a more rigorous inspection and maintenance program over the course of time rather than ending up in a situation you did before? And also with the pier. I mean, if they, you know, got into such a state of disrepair that it was necessary to expend large amounts of money to repair it, if we would do small maintenance here and there, probably be a lesion.
With the pool, we've gone to contracting with a professional pool service for opening and closing the pool, and inspection of all the moving parts and issuance of a report at year end so that we annually, when they do this, we know, and they keep us updated on what might need to be done so that it's done on an ongoing basis as opposed to let's wait 10 years and then see what happens. That is happening that way. These other projects, as we're moving them forward, will move into a reserving program so that there's a set aside for things like the fishing dock and things like the retaining walls that will have to grow at a much smaller rate because they're long, long-term investments. But that's the method that we're using to sort of get these things on the radar so they're considered annually when we do that work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Thanks, Sue.
Next is permits. We've got several. First is a public worship service at the Veterans Memorial on July 4, 2021. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion is second. I don't think there's anybody here for that. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next, we want to set a public hearing for the fee ordinance update for the ambulance lift assist only. That's just the change we talked about.
That's the change that we discussed that never got back to the agenda.
So, we'll set that up for July 8th as a public hearing. And the final one is the Fort Loop Festival permit, July 17, 2021. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion is second. Dave, you want to talk about that at all, or?
Unless you have folks have questions, I.
Are you guys good with it now, or?
I think we're good.
You have the call.
PC Denning and I have been meeting with the group every Tuesday morning here in the chambers. And I think we're better informed on what we're looking at compared to the start, and I think we're good.
You guys comfortable with what's going along?
Yeah.
How many people did you anticipate?
Not really sure with that yet. I think the fireworks could be a base festival type. And that was our major concern with the number of people coming, but I think we're gonna be able to staff it and be okay.
Are those the barge, or are those at the four?
Four.
They're at the four.
My understanding.
Yeah.
Well, so they got the, okay.
Any questions on that one? All those in favor? Opposed, thanks, guys. Next item is discussion items on the agenda. Anybody got anything they want to talk about that's not on the agenda? Things are going pretty good. Moving that way? Knock on wood.